Right, we are set.
Okay, we heard the words. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the town council regular reading to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Present.
Um, sorry, I didn't write this down right. Um, Counselor Mellon?
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki? Counselor Tulowitzki, your four, your ward four. I'm just, normally I have this here, so Counselor Tulowitzki?
The President.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Present.
And Counselor Gardner?
Present.
I'm ready for the rest.
Okay. If we can all rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is a proclamation solidarity with Ukraine. Whereas learning the news that Russia has invaded Ukraine and initiated an unprovoked attack was shocking and deeply disturbing. And whereas the town of Munster in Northwest Indiana region is home to many Ukrainian residents that add to the diversity we are proud to harbor in our community. And whereas Saint Joseph's Church Ukrainian Catholic Church has been in Munster since 1968. And whereas Saint Joseph's Church Ukrainian Church has been the site of people throughout our community coming together in protest of the unprovoked attack on Ukraine. Now therefore, the town of Munster condemns Russia's attack on the sovereign nation of Ukraine and strongly urges all citizens to join us in standing in solidarity and unity with Ukrainian community, proclaimed by the town council of Munster, Indiana on this date, March 7th, 2022.
And there's no?
We vote to adopt?
Yeah.
Good.
Mr. President, I move that we vote to adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Now we come to the public comment section. We kindly ask that in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesman. And that you keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about items on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please contact or email that question or comment to town manager Dustin Anderson at danderson@munster.org. At this time, is there any public here for public comment? Oh, yes. Okay.
Are you the only one?
If you could go to the podium over there. And all we would ask that you, your name and your address, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Branigan of 8249 North Cut in Munster. And I am one of the nominees for the Board of Zoning Appeals opening. And I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself so that you could put a face with my name. This is my 10th year living in Munster. My husband and I moved here from Chicago and we're expecting our second child. Munster's reputation for having excellent schools and its proximity to Chicago is what brought us here originally. Growing up in Fort Wayne, Indiana, I'm also a native Hoosier. It was important to me to raise my family in my home state. Over time, Munster has given us so much more than proximity and great schools. Our friends are here and it is now home. We love the small-town feel and sense of community that our town offers. Munster residents care about each other and development of their town. Because of all that our town has given to me, I want to give something back. With over 20 years of architectural experience in Chicago and in Indiana, I am confident that I would be a good fit for the Board of Zoning Appeals. I thank you for your time and consideration as you make such an important decision. And please feel free to reach out with me, or reach out to me with any questions. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none other, nobody else raising their hand or coming to the podium. I'll close the public comment section.
Mr. President, I check if there's any in electronically.
Any electronic?
There is none.
Thank you. Then we will move on to the consent agenda.
I will approve the consent agenda as given.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any comments? Seeing done. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Then we will move on to item number two, old business. This is the ordinance 1856. This is a second reading. And this is reestablishing the park donation non-reverting fund number 770. Any comments or further description from staff?
No changes since last month.
No changes since last month.
If there's no, nothing else to report? Any considered motion for this second reading of this ordinance?
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance 1856 on second reading.
Second. Very good. There's a motion, a second. Any comments? Very good. Then we'll close the comment section and roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes. Okay, moving into the new business, we have an LPA agreement for Main Street preliminary engineering and construction. This is the pavement replacement for Main Street, reconstruction from Columbia Avenue to Cypress Drive.
Yes, this is two LPA agreements. One is for preliminary engineering and one is for construction. We have worked with the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission and our preferred consultant, who we do not have a contract yet until later tonight, and our on-call engineer Jill DiNemasso, working with the staff at NERC. We are really pleased to deliver a funding model that has an 80/20 match for both the preliminary engineering of Phase 1 and for the construction of Phase 1. We were able to secure $500,000 in right-of-way. That is another LPA agreement you will see after the fact because those were additional funds that have been made available. So didn't have that contract with the state this evening. So we're asking for you to allow the town of Munster to enter into the agreement so we can begin working on redesigning Main Street.
Very good. Mr. President, I would authorize town manager to execute contract 060985 preliminary engineering and contract 060986 construction with the Indiana Department of Transportation in the amount of $5,636,065.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Any comments? I have a question, just for reminder, LPA stands for?
Local Project Administrator.
Okay. My next question would be Columbia Avenue to Cypress Drive.
It should be Columbia Avenue to Hart Ditch. Clearly, I took the framework from a previous LPA agreement and failed to delete that one word.
Okay, that's fine. I just?
That is 100% my error.
Okay. When I read that, I didn't know where Cypress was. So that's fine.
I wish it did because then I could paper over it, but no, it certainly does not.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? And roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number B. This is the Main Street redesign reconstruction engineering service award.
Yes.
Which?
Right.
Anything else you want to add to this one?
This was a very involved process to select our preferred consultant. We have Tricia Nugent here from DLZ in the audience, sitting somewhere behind me. We have invited our potential funding partners of Dyer, Highland, and Shererville to score these. We've scored these internally, took their scores. You can see that matrix here. DLZ was the clear consensus preferred consultant on this. This contract has been reviewed both by NDOT and by Mr. Westland. And we are looking forward to approving it, pending your decision, and then issuing a notice to proceed to get off to the races.
Very good. Wishes of the board?
Just that this is a good time, good timing.
It, it looks good right now. Having only done one other project roughly this size, danger lurks all over. But right now, I'm?
There's no underpass in this, is there?
No, there's not. But right now, I'm very happy and optimistic.
I move to approve the contract between DLZ Indiana LLC and the town of Munster, Indiana for Phase 1 design of Main Street complete street redesign or reconstruction project for a cost not exceeding $751,840.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Comments? Very good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
I think if I could, I just want to say thank you to council. In 2019, you were presented with the option of turning down the sure thing of a little under $400,000 to do a simple mill and overlay of Main Street. You trusted staff and you trusted NERC. And we are able to turn that into a significant betterment for the community. So thank you very much.
What do you see in the future about the width of Main Street?
Well, to be?
Because of this project?
I, I think, you know, every traffic engineering report that I have seen says that the current volume and the projected volume can be handled by two continuous lanes of traffic, one east, one west, with center turn lanes where necessary.
Again, just, can you just briefly talk about the timeframe with this? Just because, again, this is a lengthy process. Even though we're approving parts of it tonight, this is still a lot of time with this. So if you can just kind of just give a real quick overview that this is?
I'm smiling because I'm going to write a bunch of checks that Tricia's going to call me and say, you shouldn't have said that. We're gonna?
She's smiling.
With a notice to proceed, we can begin preliminary engineering this year ASAP. We have right-of-way clearance scheduled for 2023. That's, that's next year. A lot of the timing for both right-of-way and potential construction depends on the NEPA. Yeah, the NEPA, I know. It could be dangerous. Yeah. Do you want to get into the details? I don't want to rob you.
There's a summary of that.
Yeah.
There's actually a schedule in the agreement. So some of the highlights, some of the highlights are the NEPA. The NEPA is going to take it till about May of 2023.
It doesn't sound like?
It's not. Just turn it up.
Point it towards you. And this is Tricia from DLZ, correct?
Hi, yeah, I'm Tricia Nugent with DLZ.
Very good.
So the NEPA, that's a very important portion of this is to study the environmental effects, social, economic, things of that nature for the project. That'll be until May 2023. Another key aspect of this is potential for right-of-way acquisition. There's potential that there may be easements and stuff like that that we won't need a right-of-way acquisition, or you'll need less. So that actually is another portion of it. That'll be right up until the wire there in 2024, April of 2024. There is environmental documentation and permitting. So that comes right before the bidding. And the bid letting should be in the fall, September of 2024.
Very good. Thank you. I, I guess part of this, there's a lot of work to be done here. This just opens up the floodgates of a lot of preliminary engineering and things like that.
There is. Yeah, and you were asking earlier about the width of the road and things of that nature. There'll be a study to go as part of this agreement. There's an aesthetic study and then also a roadway configuration study to try and tell whether you can have, you have a proper bike lane, sidewalk, a combination of those, and what kind of configuration you need as well.
Very good. Thanks, Tricia.
Thank you.
When, when would those sort of decisions be taking place?
So we have the roadway configuration study scheduled for the summer.
Okay.
And then same thing, the aesthetic study is scheduled just after that because we need to know how much space we're going to have to make what kind of improvements, you know?
Okay, and then best guess of when someone can ride their bike down a new bike way or drive down or reconfigure?
Right. So if it's Latin September of 2024, construction will take place and, you know, it'll start, you know, taking down trees if it needs to be and doing some of the initial stuff in 2024 at the end. But it'll be 2025, winter 2025.
Okay, okay, excellent. Very good. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, moving forward, we have item number C, the cost-share agreement between the town of Munster and the Ridge Road Property LLC at Five Ridge Road Avenue. Mr. Vanderwoody?
Oh, come on, Tom. Thank you. We have been working with the property owner at Five Ridge Road.
Formerly Munster owner?
Formerly Munster rental.
Renter?
Yeah.
Of course. Thank you.
Right, and in our conversations, they recently acquired the property and had a new business move in. And as we worked with them to get that business established, we had a discussion about the condition of the parkway located directly west of the building. It's in very poor shape, as you can see from the image in the memo. And this is all public right-of-way, so this is all town property. And so in our conversations, we, as I said, we both agreed that it's in very poor shape and that both the town and the business and the property owner would benefit if it was approved and brought up to Munster standards. The property owner's name is Saber Saba. And working with him, he went and had an engineer prepare some plans for the improvement. Our own engineer reviewed those plans and provided a cost estimate. And based on that cost estimate, we agreed to split the cost for the improvement. So we put together an agreement in which the town agrees to pay 60% of the cost of the improvement and the property owner agrees to pay 40%. I'll just note that the agreement was reviewed by attorney and he's found it to be legal and in good order. So what we would be requesting tonight would be approval of that agreement and execution. And then once we have that in place, we'll go ahead and bid out the project and have that work completed.
Very good. Thank you. There's a staff recommendation before us.
Mr. President, I move that we approve and execute the attached agreement with Ridge Road Property LLC to share the cost to construct improvements within the public right-of-way at the intersection of Ridge Road and State Line Avenue.
I second it.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments?
Yeah, Tom, so are we redesigning this where there's actually going to be parking spaces for this gentleman?
Correct. These will be on-street parking spaces.
On State Line?
Right.
All right.
Diagonal, perhaps?
They're 90, they're showing 90 degree.
They look like 90 degree. And what about the turn in regards to taking the right turn? Are we going to try and cut it more so there's more ability to turn right? Just looks like the whole space is kind of pulled out more.
As far as turning right to go north on State Line from Ridge Road?
That's the only thing that I see here.
Yeah, the, the project does involve extending that curve out to the west. What it does is it actually reduces that street to a normal size. Right now, it's actually much wider than a typical street would be.
Okay.
So that it does push that curve a little, a few feet to the west.
Okay, all right.
I have no further questions.
Very good. Any other questions? Yes, Liam?
Mr. President, thank you. It says a cost, the estimate is approximately $12,800, almost $12,009, but it may be higher because of inflation costs. And, but are we going to, I don't see a not-to-exceed amount.
No, with the, with this agreement, we haven't gotten the, actually gotten the cost or we haven't bid out the project yet. So we don't actually know with that level of specificity what it will cost. We have that engineer's estimate, which was completed last year. And we think that it's probably a little bit low because everything is more expensive now than it was last year. But what we're going to do is, once we bid out the project, we'll have a contract and then we'll bring that back to the council for approval.
Thank you. Very good. Other questions?
It's just a nice chance to upgrade the entrance to the town from, from Land Sayman. So I'm supportive of this project and glad the property owner is working with us.
Very good. It's the end of comments. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 1859. This is the amending chapter 26, article 3, swimming pools of the Munster Municipal Code. Mr. Vanderwoody?
Thank you. What we have here with this item is a proposal. It comes from our building department to amend our current swimming pool code and essentially eliminate all the provisions in that code and replace it with a reference to the state of Indiana swimming pool code. And there's an explanation in the memo, but in brief, our current ordinance is based on the, the code that was in place in the state of Indiana many decades ago. And so since that time, the state has updated their codes, but the town has not. And because of that, there are some sort of out-of-date references in there. And there are some contradictions within the municipal code because we reference certain aspects of the building code in other areas. And we sort of reference those standards, but they're not shown in our current swimming pool ordinance. So what this would do, as I said, it basically just pretty much eliminates our current local provisions and replaces them with the state of Indiana provisions, which are actually much more comprehensive than ours. I do want to note that, as I say in the memo, probably one of the most substantive differences that is immediately noticeable, that's not just kind of like an arcane, you know, building code standard, is the current Indiana residential code has different rules for access restrictions for residential pools. Specifically, it states that pools can be restricted by either a four-foot wall or fence or a self-latch and gate, or, or I'm sorry, with a self-latch and gate or a power safety pool cover. Currently, our code does not permit that. We require a six-foot fence completely enclosing all residential pools. So I'm just pointing that out, that's probably the biggest, most noticeable difference to a resident in the, in the community. That would be, you know, affect, they would be affected in that way, probably. The other thing that I'll just note is that as we thought specifically about that change, right as we were thinking about that, there was a variance request submitted by a resident to in fact essentially waive that six-foot fence requirement in lieu of one of these power safety covers. And that was approved by our Board of Zoning Appeals. So there is somewhat of a precedent for this and kind of based on that and based on the reasons that I mentioned earlier with respect to our outdated standards, we're recommending this, this amendment be, well, tonight it would just be heard on first reading and then scheduled for second reading at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Tom. There's a staff recommendation before us. Wishes of the board or the council?
Mr. President, I move to hear ordinance 1859 on first reading and schedule second reading for the next regular town council meeting.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Discussion?
I would just say, I mean, I'm in favor of cleaning up the code and bringing it, you know, so that there aren't conflicts and all those sorts of things. I can't say that I'm in favor of right now getting rid of the fence requirements on the basis of one resident having gone to the BCA. It was approved. And then that means we should, we should adopt the ordinance and change, and change the lived experience in the town of Munster, much like we've done with conditional use for mixed-use development in town. I mean, it's a way to test and have some control and see how many of these requests are really coming in. I have a friend from, you know, from, from my childhood who lived in Munster. His brother fell in the, in the neighbor's pool and it was devastating. And so I guess, I, I think that the fence is a bit safer. So I'd like to, I mean, that would be my preference is not to make that change at this point and see what sort of demand we have and put a little bit of control, I guess, around and see how many people are wanting to put in these new power pool covers. We talked agenda review of some things that can go wrong. They can malfunction. They can be broken. The power can go out. The pool can be overheated and you leave it open. There's a number of reasons why they might be left open. And we have a lot of communities where there aren't lots of fences back there. So that's just my personal preference right now to have the Board of Zoning Appeals think about it and have residents think about it.
Very good. Other comments, questions?
Tom, you know, if the state law allows us to have a higher fence, in many cases, our General Assembly has been telling us what we can't do.
Yeah, my understanding is that, yes, we can be more restrictive. We can't be less restrictive. I would just point out, if we, if the consensus of the board is that we would want to leave that six-foot standard in place, we can certainly, you know, change this ordinance as it's being presented tonight. We would also likely want to include that variance mechanism as well because that's being taken out of this, this version as well because it wouldn't be needed.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. President, as the liaison to the BCA, I will say I listened to the arguments and there was much discussion. As Tom can confirm, much discussion about many of the things that you, that you mentioned. And they ultimately approved that variance. I don't have a vote as a liaison on the BCA, but it was four to one. And what I was going to ask Mr. Westland, since that was approved, is a precedent set. I know that you are not the attorney for the BCA, but how does that go with precedence and would we?
There's no precedent with variances before the BCA.
Right, thank you.
And Tom's, I concur with Tom's legal opinion that we can be more restrictive.
Thank you.
It's, it's completely a policy-driven question.
Very good. Other comments, questions? My question would be homeowner association covenants. Can they be more restrictive than what the town would have? If, if the homeowner's covenants states that they have to have a fence and this motion does get approved, what happens in that situation?
So I think Dave can maybe answer that question.
Dave, I'm going to bring that question to you then.
Yeah, the homeowners association can be more restrictive, right? You're setting a minimum. So someone comes in for a building permit for a, for a pool, right? They have to prove that they're going to put a cover or fence around it, right? And so a homeowner association could take it upon themselves to say, no pools without fences.
Which means that somebody can get it from the town, says you can do it. But homeowners association, when they, when they see him do it, the homeowners association would file suit, they have to take it away.
That's correct. But that's, that's in every scenario.
Our department doesn't enforce homeowners association agreements, correct?
That's correct. And you don't, and we've kind of been down that road in other scenarios. There are good reasons why the town doesn't want to wade into homeowners association disputes.
Understand. Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Again, there is a motion and a second. Again, there is a motion and a second.
I'll, I'll suggest that at least as far as I'm concerned, I'll, I'll vote yes. But since this is a first reading, uh, I would invite you to to bring the subject up a month from now, maybe with some extra material or some other thoughts, opinions from other people.
I, I think if we, right, right now, we typically have a first reading this week, and then two weeks from now will be our second reading.
Right. If I said next month, come out next week, next me.
Okay. So there's motion, a second. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
No.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Four to one.
Okay. Then we move to item E, ordinance eighteen sixty, first reading, reestablishment of the community capital development fund. Ms. Abbott, would you like to explain a little bit more?
I'll try. Um, so the town has had a cumulative capital fund for, since the nineteen eighties. Um, and the way it works is it allows you to, um, to accumulate cash over time so that you can make major capital purchases or expenditures for different projects as opposed to some of the other funds where, um, you're sort of restricted in how much cash you can have. You set a rate, a tax rate, as opposed to asking for as much as you can get. And because you set that rate over time, the way the formula works, your levy equals your rate times your AV. As your AV goes up, we're capped, and so your rate goes down. So when our rate was last adopted, we adopted it at five percent. It's now been reduced to four point seven percent. And so there's a mechanism in place where you can go back and reestablish the fund, put it back up to the maximum rate, and that's what we're asking you to do. First step is to pass, is to have the hearing on the ordinance. There'll be a public hearing then, adoption of the ordinance, and then there's a, once the ordinance is adopted, a thirty-day remonstrance period begins, which allows taxpayers the option to uh, file objecting petitions if they want. But tonight, we're just asking for a first read on the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. There's a staff recommendation before the board or council. We hear ordinance eighteen sixty, our first reading is scheduled second reading and public hearing for April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. If there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion a second. Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor, did I, Ms. Dr. Coltritus?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item number G, Public Works Proposal for Communication Equipment. No, I skipped over F. Resolution twenty ninety-one, the stunt, extension to the twenty twenty-two sidewalk raising program contract with Level Right Concrete. Mr. Anderson, any explanation or description?
Pretty, pretty straightforward. You, you see this annually. And, uh, I have to thank Public Works for including a nice, uh, table of how many linear feet that we've, uh, used this service for. It, it's variable. Uh, it, it's a contextually appropriate solution. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Uh, but when it works, it works. Uh, Level Right would like to continue working with us, and if you choose to see fit, we would like to continue to work with them.
Very good. Staff recommendation before us. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, oh, um, I'll make a motion, uh, that the town council approve resolution twenty ninety-one. That's not in, uh, I mean, we see here, approve resolution twenty ninety-one as presented extending the contract for sidewalk raising program with Level Right concrete through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments?
Just to, um, Dustin, the table you referenced is nice. It shows, uh, drop-off in the last two years. Curious that we know what's driving that and what we expect the experience to be this year.
I don't know why we have used them less. I, I trust my crews in the field. Uh, it didn't seem to be, uh, when you think about the total amount, the total linear feat of work we do, even at the highest usage, it's not a significant amount. So you see a variance in a table. It's like, well, that's interesting. Is this a trend? Because it, it's from here to here. Uh, if you look at the total amount of sidewalk work that we do, that, that variance is very small. So I, I don't, I can't answer your question. I don't know.
Yeah, I assume that the worst cases have been fixed. And so, you know, after three years, um, there, there wasn't the demand that there was for the programs.
Or they're so bad that you can't lift them, you just have to break them apart. We're shaving anymore, right? The concretes.
No, we're, we're fixing.
We're fixing.
We're fixing. Uh, so, uh, yeah, this is, this is, this is, is a niche tool, right? It, it's, it's a, it's a nice-to-have. We'd like to keep it around it for those edge cases where it makes sense to use. Uh, and, and if you'd like to allow us to do that.
No, I think, I was just wondering if there's something the town ought to do to advertise sidewalk programs or?
Well, that's a different conversation. There is, there is. We have a staff team working on that, and you'll see some action on that in the coming weeks.
So this usage is not indicative of uptake of fifty-fifty.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Item number G, proposal for communication equipment from ten-eight technology. Mr. Anderson?
Uh, this is, uh, I'm gonna speak in layman's terms because I'm not a communications expert. What we have are in-truck, in-vehicle radios, and those radios, uh, work when it's sunny. It works intermittently when it's rainy, and they don't work much at all when it snows. So that is a, a bad place to be. And what we'd like to do is, uh, purchase a repeater. Uh, this repeater would be, uh, mounted on a, a water tower. I, I don't know if there's any room on top of a hospital, but it boosts the signal, basically. It's kind of like, uh, for, for a, a regular person, you, you get the Wi-Fi, uh, adapter, you plug it into a socket, and you get Wi-Fi upstairs or in the basement or wherever you at. It's kind of like that, only for your radio system. Uh, this is, uh, about twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Uh, with this, we will be able to communicate over radio, uh, throughout the entire town. Uh, I, I'd say this is a, a very important piece of, uh, equipment. Uh, what we would do, if you didn't say yes, we would continue to use our personal cell phones, which is not a best practice, right? Like, we have these in-vehicle radios. We'd like to be able to use them. And placed in the broader context of communication equipment, the police and fire transitioned over to a digital, uh, system. If Public Works were to join Public, uh, Police and Fire, as we, uh, replaced those radios for the, the first responders, that repeater that we're, uh, proposing that you allow us to purchase can be switched over, uh, to boost that signal as well. When Public Works would go digital in the future. So it's not a buy now, and it's gonna be obsolete soon.
Thank you. Staff recommendation in front of us. Wishes of the council?
I move we approve twenty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to send to some payment to eight, ten technology for radio system upgrades.
Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Why are we not just moving to digital? Why are we doing this?
Uh, because that would require the purchase of many radios, uh, and that's more expensive. The radios that we have for Public Works work fine. If we buy the repeater, they'll work, uh, longer. And what I would like to do is assemble, uh, a staff team of Public Works, Fire and Police, discuss when those, uh, Fire and Police radios are gonna reach end of life, because they eventually will, and then phase in the purchase of, uh, new digital radios, uh, across those three departments with priority on usage. And then kind of make that a, a programmatic pivot towards digital for all the enterprise.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next item, purchase of the twenty twenty-two CAT two-eight-nine D-three truck or track loader.
Track loader.
Track loader.
Track.
Very good. Any, uh, anything to add to the memo that's before the board or the council?
Nope.
Okay. There's a staff recommendation, uh, before the council in your packet. Wishes of the board or council?
Mr. President, I move to approve one twenty twenty-two CAT two-eight-nine D-three truck loader from alto, altor for CAT for a total price, actual vehicle trade of eighty-eight thousand eighty dollars.
Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second from Mr. Dr. Coltritus. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, purchase of the twenty twenty-two John Deere Z-nine thirty M Z-track mower, mower. Anything else we wanna talk about this?
No, all three of these pieces of equipment, uh, the, the, the track loader, the, this piece of equipment and the next are all in our five-year capital plan. So these are planned expenditures.
Move we approve the purchase from Castaglia, Castadia, or a new twenty twenty-two John Deere Z ninety-three OM Z-track mower with the trade-in of four thousand for net price from Sourcewell of nine thousand one hundred thirty dollars and four cents to replace unit three fifty-four.
I'll second that. There's a motion, a second. Any comments, questions?
How come we don't get any pictures?
That is good feedback, and I will make a note that we get pictures in the future. No, that's.
There's a touch of truck program a little bit later in the year.
I wouldn't.
Very good. Uh, motion, a second. There's no other comments. So roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. And now we get to the purchase of the twenty twenty-two John Deere sixteen hundred Turbo Series mower.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve purchase from Castaglia, Castadia, or such for a new twenty twenty-two John Deere sixteen hundred Turbo Series mower with trade-in of fifteen thousand dollars for a net price through Sourcewell of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-three cents to replace unit number three five two.
Even without a picture, I will say. Very good. There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions?
Turbo series.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is a appointment to boards and commissions. Uh, the nominating committee recently reviewed the applications for these boards and commissions on February ninth, and thereafter conducted interviews on Tuesday, February fifteenth. As a result of these interviews, the committee has respectfully recommends, um, various people for the Park Board, Board of Safety, Board of Zoning Appeals. I'd like to thank the nominating committee for their time and effort in reviewing applications and interviewing. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the Park Board.
I would move that we, uh, nominate, uh, then repay for Park Board position.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments?
I'd just like to speak on behalf of, uh, Mr. Funston. He's a, he, he's a dedicated resident, but as I'm looking at these things, I'm part of the cross-talk process I'm having is, how do we get some new people involved? I know Mr. Repay is also, uh, nominated for another position. It might be interesting to shift his expertise from the Park Board to some other place if we feel that he, he's right. And, um, you know, I think Mr. Funston is a lifelong resident. He's been involved in the town. He's, um, been in touch with town manager's office, looking at street safety. He's brought several ideas for me from, uh, his, his work and colleagues of, you know, new uses for different areas of the park. And so I just find him to be a person that I would personally support in, in this position.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, um, I we had an op, you gave us opportunity, um, the council to call the nominating committee for an executive session so that we can discuss it. I feel a little uncomfortable discussing people who bringing out people and starting to discuss them in public because it's somewhat of personnel. And I'm, so I just, we had our opportunity and then the absence of that, um, personally, I took the opportunity to contact a couple of the nominating commission, um, committee people. So that's, I don't know, I don't we had our opportunity, I believe, to discuss the individuals at the executive.
Yeah, I did, just to make another comment, in, in general, we've got the nominating committee now formalized. I received some, uh, emails from people who had submitted and they didn't get a call or they didn't understand why they weren't, why they weren't contacted about how the process would work. So I think there's still some improvement. I mean, this, I think these are all the appointments we have for this calendar year. But throughout the year, it would be nice to have a work study or some sort of, um, conversation around how we might improve the processing of the nominating committee, because there's a bit of a lack of transparency um, in that, since we haven't had the executive session, et cetera, et cetera.
I would agree, but with, with terms of transparency, I didn't ask the council in general if they wanted to have an executive session with the nominating committee, and I didn't hear back from anybody on the council. So, uh, with lack thereof, again, there is, there is work to be done, I believe, that we can, we can work through. Um, other comments or questions with regards to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
No.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next, we will take nominations for the Board of Safety.
I would nominate Matt Maloney for the Board of Safety position.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. At this time, I would entertain motions for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Rachel Brand again to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments?
Rachel was here this evening, a chance to give people her background. Um, so it's a matter of public record then. She's got twenty years' experience as a, uh, as an architect. That's a profile that we don't currently have in Plan Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, I think it would be a good add to this apartment and to our, to the town's capabilities.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
No.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
No.
Counselor Gardner.
No.
I would nominate Brad Hemingway to the BCA Committee.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
There's a second. Any comments? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Although I like Brad's, uh, I'll say no.
Counselor, um, now I'm, now you're through.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus and Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Okay. Those are, are, uh, appointments to the boards and commissions. Are there any reports?
I have one report, um, as the liaison to the school board. Mr. Wells from the high school announced his retirement, um, just a couple days to go to the students and then to the public today, and, uh, I'd like to say he will, he will be missed. He's going for a, a different, a public or a private, um, opportunity. Uh, he served the school well, and, um, we will be hard-pressed to replace him, but I'm sure that the, that the school board, uh, and the administration will do a, a good and thorough job of doing so, but I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Wells for all the service to our school, um, to our school district.
Very good. Any other comment or any other, uh, reports?
Just administratively for the counselors, I have a stack of things that each of you need to sign. It's a little different today, so I'll start.
And I just would like to report that we did have a work study last Tuesday. Uh, MKSK, um, design group was in town, uh, to lead us in some, reviewing some of the transportation-oriented development, uh, projections. And again, it was just a work study. It was a chance for the council to get up, get up the speed on some of this. And, uh, we will be having future reports and future work studies in the future on that topic. Uh, any other announcements?
Just to add to that, there is, there was a YouTube recording of that meeting. It was about two and a half hours, a big project. Lots of good information. You can see the presentation and hear the experts talk through it, so um, just recommend people who are interested in the TDD project to check it out.
Very good. Uh, then therefore, we have March twenty-first, April fourth, and April eighteenth, or the upcoming, uh, regular town council. Regular town council meeting and redevelopment commission meetings. Those are the announcements. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then with that, do we want to move into the redevelopment commission? Mr. John Castro is here from the school board. Thank you. Okay, we'll call the order, the meeting of the Redevelopment Commission, regular meeting on March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any public here for comment? Public comment? Seeing none. We move on to the consent agenda.
I will approve the consent that Jen has given.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Roll call, please. Oh, we forgot to do roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Coltritus.
Present.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And then we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
Yes, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Coltritus.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. And there is no old business, new business. There's a two thousand twenty-one annual report to the Redevelopment Commission. This is a memo from our treasurer. Anything to add?
No, this is an annual requirement. It's an annual report to the Redevelopment Commission that we're required to file before April first of each year. You can see, taken from our financial statements, the numbers that they require. Debt service funds, the capitals, project funds, and no action or motions are required. This is a report to the Redevelopment Commission.
May I ask you a question?
Of course.
Fund four seventy-one, the TIF allocation, cash and investments at the end of last year, thirteen million dollars.
I'll go with Ms. Abbott.
Oh.
Yes.
And just curious, and it looks like there were seven million in receipts. Like, how is that fund developing? And what what can this body do with it when? Or if and when we have something on the agenda?
Thank you. So going back in time, when the redevelopment commission was first created, it's. One of the driving forces behind it, as I recall, was the Great Separation Project. And at the time, we thought that we were going to have to be funding a lot more than we ultimately had to do. So. We have been quite doing quite well in terms of bringing in revenue from the various projects. That's where the TIF dollars come from. Right now, the money's being used primarily to pay off the bonds related to the the different projects. Panera. Land of Frost. Or the other Lake Business Center, all of those different projects. And Centennial Village is the the bigger one. The money can be used for different. Projects within the redevelopment district related to what. What the law calls the project. So there has to be something, it has to be tied back to something within that redevelopment district.
So may I add? So we have been strategically patient with these funds because, you know, there are only so many different funding streams, right? So you'll recall a lot of activity and energy and excitement about investing in our station areas, taking them. From, you know, split face block into something that we as a community can be proud of for generations.
Meaning Ridge Road and Main Street Station.
Yes.
Rather than the standard we get to upgrade.
Right.
Fit our community.
So to to match our community's expectations. That's going to cost a significant amount of money. Knowing that that was coming down the pipe, we did not. Present to you large projects because there was energy and excitement about that for a very long period of time. In fact, when we had our construction agreement, that was one of the items that. Counselor Mellon, Mr. Westland, myself included in the ability to upgrade those facilities. And as we've gone through the review of these plans, heroically, Tom, Jill, Mark, Chris, our whole staff team. Looking at where we I. Where there's daylight between what the project would provide our community and what we understand intimately as our residents' expectations. There's a number of instances where there there's a significant amount of daylight. And NICD will. Meet us where we're at if we pay for those things. For example, they they propose having a dry detention. Ditch in the middle of our proposed central business district where you, as a council, have said, this is where we want to, irrespective of any kind of zoning. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna create a streetscape. We're going to invest in this section of town. And by the way, NICD says you're going to put a dry ditch there, a dry pond. It is completely nonsensical, right? And there's some things that we can do with properties and how we can leverage that. But at the end of the day, there there's going to be some expenditure that the town has to make. To make that right, to meet our community's expectations. The same thing with the Main Street Station, the same thing with Ridge Road. The power lines that they would just drape thirty-four KV just right down the middle of Ridge Road if we let them. We're not going to let them. We have worked diligently with NIPSCO and NICD to relocate, to co-locate those. Distribution, those transmission lines. But that's going to cost an additional expense, right? So and the net result of all this work will be a lived environment that we can be proud of. For a very, very long time. If we just took what they gave us, it would not look that nice. So I can be sympathetic to someone who says, look at all this cash. We're flush. Let's spend it. Well, we have been given direction from a policy standpoint by the council, the Redevelopment Commission, to make this nice. So we have been working for a very long time for, as a staff team with NIPSCO, with NICD, with the joint venture. So. I don't want to say it's spoken for, but there are a number of significant improvements that our residents will enjoy for generations that will come as a result. Of our strategic patience using this allocation area.
Well, the other thing too with this money, it looks like it's a lot right now. But we have to remember, we're still going to be revaluing the. Underpass on Calumet two in another year and a half. So, I mean, it it looks like it's a lot of money right now, but it's really not. So, you know, that'll be revisited in about a year and a half, you know, when we can do our. Our traffic count again to see if it's even viable or not. So.
That's a fair point.
Thank you for that description. I had no ulterior motive or other plans.
Oh, none taken, but I think. But for the people who might listen to this in the future, or the folks in the audience, like, they they should know that you you have empowered staff to do significant work on the town's behalf. And that we're we're proud of that work, and we're looking forward to deliver something that we as a community can be proud of for generations.
And all those things you talked about can are within the project as.
They're in service to the district.
Service to the district.
Commissioners, we always appreciate questions that show that you did your homework.
Very good. Other comments, questions? There's a motion, a second about the annual report before us.
There's no motion, no second.
Oh, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I can move to adjourn.
Then I would. Enter a motion to. There's a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We will take a five-minute break, and then we will start the Munster Civic Foundation meetings.
Hey, students in the back, if you need a picture, come on out.